Very, uh...
The office. Okay, okay.
That's because he can, you let him do it.
Oh, I've already done my task.
Good morning. Hey, we got cartoons this morning.
Yes, what?
We got cartoons.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Miller.
You think we're sending a message?
Yep, for the circus.
Oh, what's this? Well, if we were better at, we'd have more people in the audience.
Had a lot of crews than that.
Before we get into Robert.
I don't, that's what I was...
Trapping?
Yeah. Wasn't that unbelievable?
Yeah, she, she really played it.
Oh, I mean, not a smile. Thing.
It's like, that's fun.
Now, this one, I was just making sure this one, it's fun.
Should I try it?
Why not? I mean, she played that to the hilt, and they were good.
Alrighty.
There he is.
This is Rick.
I, I sent her an email, and she responded. This is bad afternoon.
Sorry, back and send.
And it's just some background stuff.
So what's...
I think it'd be foolish not to. Well, Yala, those are...
Have a good day, man.
So, the minute we settle the case, I'll be...
I like this crowd to start weeding right now.
Make sure one is out, because all is going to get on the board, out numbers.
Boy, I hadn't thought about that.
We're gonna get a contention from the pickleball people.
Well...
This might be too cold for them.
What about we give them bathrooms and no, no place to play?
Yeah, take a pic, oh, you're neat.
That could happen.
I want to hear you bring it up.
I want to hear you say that.
I didn't do close.
You know, looking back, we should've never got rid of that egg.
I told him.
The dragon key, is that the one we kept forever and ever?
Guarantee, take care of my mother-in-law.
Well, yeah, and it...
Oh, yeah.
Actually, I, I had a, I had an outlet for that. The... I went to an heaven's...
Oh, you get technical, you always got cans, you pay about three bills.
Street festival? Maybe that was the problem. That helped them build several ones, stripped out trailers and, and convert them into big bathrooms and eight, six hundred dollars for the... They would've bought it.
That's only the play, it's not even the nice city.
This thing, they were...
I know the cost is fifty thousand dollars. Fifty thousand, what do you know for two minutes, right?
You had a better idea.
I get on scratch.
He said, "What are you on?" I said, "Did you..."
That's kind of the story of our life, isn't it?
But then...
It's always...
Still cheap.
I could work the way... I've been working the stock market like that for forty years.
Still here, still here.
I can remember back when the stock market would go twenty-five dollars, forty dollars, and that was a good day.
Now, it's three hundred or four hundred. Yeah, just wham, wham.
Ninety-six rated cab.
All the formers that we drew up, uh, hearing to are out the window.
Yeah, what are those like?
Everything that you're supposed to do.
Does not apply.
You don't respond to anything.
But I don't think we have those.
A white flag off in the distance of the three hundred.
I had a good friend that played that pretty good.
And I need to pick up some dark chocolate.
And he said, when the computer age come in, and they got to where they could trade...
So what do you mean?
On odd money, and trade instantly. He said, made the average person almost impossible to beat the market. You can get in it, stay in it, and be lucky, but to, to get out of it on a daily basis...
I thought it'd be like this, it's just a brain. He said, "Does anybody know, anybody that's not a professional, they can be superior?"
Yeah, it's, it's, it's...
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, it's a microsecond, yeah.
A little smart, yeah.
Micro, microseconds.
Micro, yeah, these super computers doing these trades, yeah.
My spring is...
Well, even a IPO, I mean, you as an individual, you can't, you can't buy it, right?
Yes.
It's already, it's, the deal's already done for you, you can hear about it.
Yeah, when, uh, when it's, when it's announced, it's, they're already sold.
And that's after we were paid, so...
I tried to get Amber One about a month ago, let him in the room.
Morning, William.
Well, when I go to Apple, I don't want any of them.
Hey, where's, where's my door, hey, where's my door, Charlie?
I gave you two choices, eighty-six or ninety-eight.
We're bad.
Write us a trial.
Allison, you, you gotta make...
That was Graham. Yeah, he showed me, he put you on there.
She had her binocular, I had her doctor.
It's a new addition.
Really working it, huh?
Well, it looks like she's...
They probably has, but...
They got it somewhere else and, and, uh, held it. Put some grease on the poles so the ants didn't get... Ants probably are too active.
Well, that was a wooden pole that they got.
But coal is kind of a unique...
Snakes, it is snakes, or whatever it is. They're not, they have to get a metal pole, they give it a...
The little coastal fishing village.
Hey, Michael. Michael, you ready? Call the meeting door, the pledge.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
Next regular scheduled, uh, meeting is scheduled for, uh, Friday, February twenty-seventh, at twenty fifteen, at nine a.m., nine a.m. at the community center. Uh, please turn off your cell phones. I need a motion to approve the, uh, minutes of the last meeting.
So moved.
I'll second that. Uh, action agenda.
We have to vote on that.
Oh, we have to vote, of course. Call the roll, please.
Supervisor Holbert.
Yes.
Supervisor Miller.
Yes.
Supervisor Halbig.
Yes.
Supervisor White.
Yes.
President McCullough.
Yes.
Action agenda. Motion to reconsider assessment decision on fifty forty-six Angelo Circle. Before we get into that discussion, I'd like, uh, John McClure to state where we are today as far as our policy. I can't see, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay.
The district, uh, for several years, based upon a letter written by the general manager, Mick Grouse, uh, to Mr. Roberts, had, uh, assessed his lot and a half as a single lot. You're all well aware of that, based on Mr. Roberts' appearance before the board, uh, in, uh, November or December, I can't recall which. Uh, at that time, the board voted to continue to assess Mr. Roberts' property on the basis of a single lot. Uh, the, I believe the vote was three to two. Roberts Rules of Order states that a member of the prevailing party can seek a motion for reconsideration of an action taken by the board. Uh, and a member of the prevailing party, Mr. White, uh, did make such a motion at the last board meeting. Uh, the motion was tabled in order to provide an opportunity for Mr. Roberts to come back before the board, before the board, uh, completely heard and reconsidered its prior, uh, finding. So, I think that's where we're at, uh, Mr. Roberts was notified, he's here today. Uh, the board, uh, would currently have Mr. White's motion tabled, uh, and so, uh, it needs to be brought back to the board, uh, which I believe we're doing it by today's action. And then, uh, the matter should be heard procedurally, uh, that's where we stand. As I recall, Mr. White's motion was that for this, uh, assessment year, uh, the board honor the assessment as a single lot, but in all years going forward, starting next year, the lot would be assessed as a lot and a half, as I recall.
Okay. Question I have is, the, there is an additional assessment for having property on the golf course? Would, um...
That was addressed at the last meeting.
And what was the outcome of that?
Okay, the, I believe, in, in my opinion, the golf course assessment would apply to all property owned. I, I'm presuming that, uh, the golf frontage lots, I believe, is fifty dollars, is that right? Sixty-one dollars now, and so the half lot would be assessed half of that. I, I can't imagine any other reason to do it otherwise.
Okay.
I thought at the last meeting, we were gonna assess the half lot at, as an unimproved lot, which would have no golf course.
Okay, that, that makes sense to me. Uh, I, I would say...
I think that was the way you voted.
You know, one, one of the things we did not do when you did the unity of title resolution was address the golf course aspect of that assessment. Uh, but, uh, it, it makes, that's for the board to call, but, but it seems logical to me that if you're receiving a golf course assessment, it would be for the residents only and not for the vacant lots, so... Unless we assess other vacant lots with the golf course, uh, do we do that, Tanya?
Yeah, yes, we do.
Well, if you assess other unimproved lots with the golf course assessment, I, I don't see where this would be any different.
Right, I, yeah, that's why I was gonna ask, John, that, I mean, the, the tax rolls set. The policy is to, to assess golf course property as golf course property, so I don't think, I don't think in this case or any case you can deviate from that.
Golf course property is golf course property.
Golf course property.
Alright.
So we need, we do need a motion to, to bring this, uh, tabled motion back to the board.
Alright, I need a motion to, uh, bring the table back to the board.
I, so moved.
I'll second that.
I have a question before I go further.
Okay.
Uh, on that half lot that Mr. Roberts owns, is there any portion of that on the golf course?
No.
Of the half lot?
Yes, completely on the golf course.
Yeah, it would be.
And the other lot is as well? I thought he had less than, what, ninety feet or something like that? Okay.
We have a motion, a second, we have not yet, yet, had a...
Need a second?
Uh, what are we voting on here?
Not when I...
Larry seconded the motion.
Yeah, I seconded. Oh, I didn't, he didn't.
We're voting to bring the tabled motion back to the board for consideration.
Alright, Mr. White.
We gotta vote.
Do we have to vote on that?
We gotta vote on that?
Okay.
Supervisor Miller.
Yes.
Supervisor Halbig.
We're voting to bring it back?
Just to bring it back.
Okay, yes.
Supervisor White.
Yes.
Supervisor Holbert.
Yes.
President McCullough.
Yes.
I did not ask for public comment on that motion because that was procedural motion, not, not a motion to decide a matter before the board, a proposal before the board. Now, having brought it back before the board, uh, the motion to assess the property as a single lot for this year, but to assess it in years forward as a lot and a half is now before the board. Um, and it was previously motioned, I believe it was seconded at the prior meeting, and, uh, so now it's brought back, it's now an active motion, and the board should proceed accordingly.
Okay.
So we can make a motion to...
Motion's already made.
Pardon?
It's already made.
The motion is on the floor now.
Okay.
As I stated it.
Alright.
So, Mr. White, uh, I'd like you to voice your, uh, changes.
When I voted on this two months ago, three, maybe three months ago, I based my, uh, my vote, my opinion, on the fact that Mr. Roberts had presented a letter from Mr. Grouse, a signed letter from him dating back about five years ago, uh, changing the adjustment on this one and a half lots to one residential lot. My assumption was that if he signed a letter stating this, that he probably had the authority to do it, or thought he had the authority at least to do it. During that discussion, I apparently missed a comment from Mr. Halbig, that he was questioning if Mr. Grouse had the authority. But I did afterwards write a letter to our attorney, Mr. McClure, and asked some questions regarding this matter. One of the questions I asked him was, did Mr. Grouse have the authority to make this special adjustment? And his answer was, and I quote, "In my opinion, Mr. Grouse had no authority to make this adjustment." Now, as he stated previously, I'm not looking to bring back any past previous assessments. What I would propose is remove, we remove this adjustment on lot ten and eleven for future assessments, and therefore, all assessments would be based on the resolution twenty fifteen dash oh one dash oh nine dash oh two. I also realize that this lot is a very small lot, but at the present time, Sun and Lake bases their adjustments, or their assessments, I'm sorry, on lots, not lot size. And would you please read that resolution that we passed a month ago? Do you have that in front of you? It was my understanding on that resolution that there was only one, uh, fee for, for being on the golf course, not a fee and a half, or two fees, or whatever, however many lots they had.
Just kinda next to that.
What was the resolution number?
Uh, two oh one five dash oh one slash oh nine dash oh two.
And I'm, I'll go ahead and re, I'll verbatim, number two, the bottom of the resolution. Actually, let me, let me start at the top. Whereas the Board of Supervisors has determined that the district needs a policy setting forth how the district's non-advalorm operation and maintenance assessments will be calculated on adjacent platted lots, which have been unified by the filing of a declaration of unity of title agreement in the public records of Highlands County, Florida. The policy, you want me to go ahead and read the policy itself?
Okay. Sean, does that mean there's only one assessment then on a unity of title?
What it means...
One assessment for, for the golf course, I'm sorry.
Well, I would, I would read it this way. Uh, we did not differentiate between O and M assessments and golf course assessments. So, since the golf course assessment is part of the district assessments, and we said that they will be assessed as a lot and a half, I would, I would interpret that to mean any assessment placed on the lot would apply to the lot and a half as well. I, I don't, I, I know the board did not separately address the golf course assessment as an aspect of, of this assessment in that resolution, that was not part of the discussion. It simply talked about district assessments, and so, to the extent that is a district assessment, in my opinion, it would continue to apply unless the board wishes to revisit that and, and change that.
John, this unity of title thing, I think there was some discussion, it, it doesn't have any effect on how assessments are levied, it has effect on estate planning, it has effect on, on how your property is, is signed off and things like that, and I think there was a discussion about that. I don't think, uh, I don't think the unit, uh, unity of title resolution gives anybody any advantage over any assessment levy, unless I've, I've completely missed, missed, missed the vote on that one.
I believe the discussion at the board meeting was this. Uh, the reason for the resolution was, if you have a unity of title, and you, let's say, for example, you own three lots in a row, and you build only on the middle lot, you still have a lot on each side that you could readily market. And so those properties would continue to be assessed absent the unity of title at the improved rate, improved by road and everything else. If you elect to get a unity of title and make that all one property, then, uh, it would be assessed as a vacant unimproved lot, as opposed to a vacant improved lot on each side. So there, there is, the, the reasoning for that was, these other two lots could be readily marketed, and were therefore worthy of the, the, the complete assessment, uh, whereas if you claim it all as a unity of title, all one property, it would only be fair to, uh, assess that as unimproved property and the one house as improved.
This particular property, since the deed, when the deed was drawn up, it was drawn up, or it was purchased as a lot and a half, and that's the way the assessments have been, should've been levied, as a primary lot and a, and a secondary lot, as far as assessments are, are concerned.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's all I have, Chris.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I've got, uh, I've got something, I'm, I'm gonna read this, it's fairly short, and I, I pass it out to the, to the rest of you guys, and, and this is a, is an email that I sent Tanya, and she responded to me. And the email starts, my, my, uh, my email said, "Tanya, should, should've asked at the last meeting when it was discussed, your staff found the error and corrected it on the Roberts issue. Do you believe the lot and a half assessment was correct? I know the board voted to uphold, hold the reduction. I did find out after the fact through an email from John McClure that no one, including Michael Wright, has an independent authority to give or reduce, to forgive or reduce assessments. Please let me know when you get time." And here's her response, and it's pretty much sums up the whole thing. She says, "Supervisor Halbig, yes, staff found the error and corrected it. The district builds their assessments based on legal description, and the legal description of Mr. Roberts' lot is lot ten plus the east one half of lot eleven, one and a half lots. If the legal description is incorrect, then the correction will have to be made by the property appraiser. The legal description is provided in the detailed property records of the Highland County Property Appraiser website. The exceptions to this are the commercial build on a per-room basis, commercial acreage, and a few residential improved properties that fall into the per-acre basis for billing assessments. The two lots to the right of Mr. Roberts and the one lot to the left are billed at one and a half lots. I do understand that the lots are different sizes throughout the district, but the district does not consider square footage of the lot to bill assessments. I haven't seen your email, but I do remember conversations at previous board meetings between McClure, John McClure, and the board recording, regarding forgiveness of assessments, and John said the same thing, no one has the authority. I hope this helps, thanks." So that pretty much sums it up, and I did pull out, and I've got on the second, next two pages, the legal description from the county. Page one of three, the legal description of, that's this particular property is Sun and Lake, east of Sebring, unit fifteen revised, flat book fifteen, page sixty-four, lot ten, plus the east one half of lot eleven, block seven forty. On the next page, or page number three, I've got it circled, is the way the county taxes this property, is, is, as far as advalorm taxes, they tax lot ten with a land value, and they also tax one half of lot eleven with a land value. So there, there's no disputing that the, what the legal description is, and that's the way, that's the way we base our, we base our assessments. We base our assessments on the legal description of the county. And, uh, the parcel ID number, I know Mr. Roberts said he's only got one parcel ID number, but I, I, I mean, that's not, that's not unusual. The original parcel ID number on his, on his warranty deed shows, shows a slash zero one one, which depicts another half of, uh, half of that, that lot, and I don't know why they don't carry those last four digits into the system. In other words, if the system may, may not, may not take that many digits, and that's why they dropped that, but, um, anyway, that's, uh, that's pretty much sums it up, I think.
I have a couple of questions. Um, you didn't include Mr. Grouse's letter in this particular package, you remember when, the date it was written, and what his title was?
I thought it was Fisher. Wasn't it Fisher?
No, it's Big Grouse.
There is, I have the letter here in front of me, there's not a date that I can see on this letter, there is a postmark date, I, which I cannot read, um, the copy is, is not clear from the copy machine that we were given, so...
It's at least seven years old, isn't it? Uh, John, question for you, does that mean that applied to any staff member regardless of position?
The only way any staff member could revise an assessment is with specific delegated authority from the board to do so, which I would strongly caution against ever doing.
But weren't you district attorney at the time this was written?
I never saw that letter, sir, until it was presented at Mr. Roberts' hearing.
That's the first time you've seen it?
First time I've ever seen it, first time I've been aware of it.
Okay.
Let me ask a connecting question to Mr. Miller's question. I believe there's also times when the board supervisor, supervisors has no power to reduce assessments unless there's some, some, uh, uh, I guess, mistake in fact or something like that. Uh, I, that's what I'm, that's what I, I was gonna ask you that question, if, if it came up.
The, the, uh, interpretation of the General Counsel for the Association of Special Districts, uh, is that once a, uh, a tax roll is certified, so to speak, we don't do that formally here, but we clearly adopt a budget resolution and levy the assessments. Uh, so once that occurs, it, it is a final assessment. Uh, there have been many requests over the years for developers and other people coming in to say, "Look, if you can just reduce or forgive these assessments, we can, we can all make money together and proceed forward, et cetera." Uh, but the interpretation has, has constantly been, as it must be by law, I believe, once an assessment is, is levied and complete, then there is no authority, even by the board, to, uh, remove that assessment.
Does our action, our previous action on, uh, Mr. Roberts set a precedent for any other multiple lot owners?
Well, in my, in my opinion, the, the action the board took clearly, uh, allows someone to come in and say, even though I have a lot and a half, I want to be assessed solely as a lot, and, and if that action is approved, then how could it not be a precedent? Clearly, it is a precedent.
But I guess my, my, my thought is, is that, uh, I, my assumption is that Mr. Roberts bought this piece of property as a lot, whether it was explained to him as a lot or a lot and a half, um, and the fact that he's got documentation, e, even though it maybe it's not correct, um, or legal, if you will, um, in his mind, he basically bought a buildable lot. you will, in his mind, he basically bought a buildable lot. And through the years of finding out that he was actually paying for a lot and a half, and then he got that changed to a lot, I just kind of questioned about going, basically reneging on a previous contract with the district manager, whether he was right or wrong. So, that's my only comment. Any other comments from the board?
Related question. I don't want this to interfere with what we're talking about right now, but there's an appeal process that you were going to address. Have you addressed that?
I've not yet drafted it to the point I can present it to the board, but I did not know that you wanted that done prior to action on this. I can-
No, I don't. I'm just curious because this comes into play.
Yes, it does. What we had discussed at the prior meeting was something along the lines of, once the board adopts that final resolution, 60 days from that date would terminate anyone's ability to challenge the assessment. And we were going to appoint an appeal committee. That would be a Sunshine Committee, and it would be comprised of the district comptroller, at least one member of the board, and a third member.
Yeah, we need to finish that off because we received, all of us received information this week as the fact it wasn't in place, and then it was deleted and so forth. So, I'd like to see a resolution of that at the next meeting.
I'll prepare it, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Roberts, do you have any comments?
I'd like to take a moment here, if I could, to provide some more-
Lynn, would you, excuse me, would you state your name, please, for the record?
I'm sorry.
Would you state your name, please, for the record?
Hi, I'm Lynn Roberts. Lynn Roberts. I'm the owner of the property impression on 5026 Annual Circle. And I'd just like to provide a little more information because as looking at the minutes of this, it said that Mr. Wright wanted to revisit this. He asked some information that has possibly changed his opinion, et cetera. So, I thought I would provide some information to the board. I have provided four documents. I'd like to go over some things, and I would like anybody here, Mr. McClure, because you've been here for a long time, and you've been involved in a lot of these actions that have gone on in Sunning Lake, to correct me if I make a statement that's not correct. I would like to, and I'm not, the other thing I guess is that before the board votes, is it only that three people can vote, and that's the people who voted? So, everybody can vote?
Yes.
I'd like to provide, because there was some misconceptions. Mr. Huber, am I pronouncing that correctly?
Almost.
Okay. Well, anyway, I was under, making the assumption that I accepted the fact that I knew that I was getting assessed for a lot and a half. You've got to go back a little bit because this whole thing evolved. In other words, they built nine holes on Sunning Lake for Turtle Run. The surveyor made some big mistakes at that time. I've got the documentation in here, and it's concerning your property. When I say yours, I'm talking Sunning Lake, and if I say you, I'm referring to Sunning Lake. Sunning Lake on Mendavia has six lots that are golf course lots. And you've got them assessed right now and paying zero taxes to the county because it is considered a conservation easement. At one time, Lot 10 was a conservation easement. Tell me I'm wrong. Anyway, the fact is that when I bought the lot, it was presented to me by Sunning Lake's representative as a substandard lot, but now it's buildable lot because they had attached half of Lot 11. Also, when the surveying was done on the second half of Turtle Run, there was another mistake made in Lot 8. It rendered Lot 8, over where I'm at, that was up on the board here a minute ago, as non-buildable because it has a huge grain almost in the middle of it. That's a fact also. Sunning Lake, Sunning Lake took and went to the county, obviously, enjoying these lots, making four lots. They are not four equal lots in any sense of the imagination. Three of them, seven, nine, 12, were all standard lots. By that, I mean 100, by 125, and they're on the golf course. Both my neighbors were presented, when they bought, you can verify it, when they bought their property, left and right of me, whichever way you want to look from the golf course to the road, both good people were told they were buying a lot and a half, and they knew what they were going to be assessed at. I was told by a representative that I was buying a lot. And if you look at one of the documents I provided you, it's from 2005, 10 years ago, and that's when this thing, how long it's been this way? 10 years. 10 years ago, I got in the mail in Kentucky, because I didn't build, more than 10 years ago, I'm sorry, 2001, the legal description that Sunning Lake was giving me, the legal description that you all were giving me, verified in my mind, 100%, that the man had told me correctly, that I now have a buildable lot, Lot 10. I know how it was constructed because my deed told me, as Mr. Halbig pointed out, that it was made up of half of Lot 11. Here's a legal description. You have it before you. Unit 15, Block 740, Lot 10. How can you get any other impression other than that? Therefore, I never, ever accepted or thought I was paying for a lot and a half. In 2005, which is the one you have before you, you can see that it was changed. It was assessed at one time at a higher rate of $500 and something, and then eventually it was paid at $379. That's because when I appealed to the then-manager and the director of plans and development, who took over a month and a half and actually tried, tried to put a house on that lot of the required size, shape, et cetera, you cannot. I will take back one statement. I did say that you couldn't put a house on that lot. After analyzing over it and going over it, you can only in one way put a house of that dimensions on that lot. And that is to put it right on the easement of seven and a half feet from that cart path. Seven and a half feet, and then you're going to have the house 65 and a half feet along the cart path, seven and a half feet away. The other description, or the other thing you've got in there is from the county that Mr. Halbig pointed out. It is one strap. And the one thing that you didn't point out is that, and I told you that last time, but now I've provided the evidence, you can see that the county devalued the primary lot by 10%, and they devalued that half lot by 30%. And the reason they did that, and it's on there, is the description is X X front, which who wants to mow a lot out front? The value of the lot is based on the back. When those lots were put together, all three of the other lots, the primary lot is a standard lot, a standard lot. The one, my primary lot, Lot 10, which used to be a conservation easement, required to visit, doesn't even have half a standard lot on the town. It's not half. The only other lot that was substandard was Lot 11 at 77 feet. And the way it surveyed, Lot 10 didn't even get half of that back from on there. So, the total today, the total, and you're implying that I should be assessed a lot and a half, Mr. McClure, on the golf course because of the legal description? When I only have 83 feet, a standard lot is 100? I think that's a little absurd. The other thing I'll point out to you is Mr. Costi, I think it was, was in here on the 26th of November at the meeting, and pointed out the fact that he had a surveyor come because his lot is a reverse of mine, small on the front, large on the back. And he put his house within seven and a half feet of his property line so that he could fit it on there. He also pointed out to you that it's not the foundation of the house, it's the E of the house. That's as close as you can tell, seven and a half feet. Now, picture Mr. Costi's lot. Picture, if you can have him, he's seven and a half feet. Picture the house next door to him. How close can that fellow put his house? Seven and a half feet? No. He can't put it but seven and a half feet from that property lot also. So, now you've got the house 15 feet apart, but you're thinking that you're going to have a house on a cart path, seven and a half feet, where you run a large tractor, you take trailers, double axles, full of sand, everything else in the world up and down that public access, and you're going to have somebody build a house seven and a half feet from it? Absurd. Absolutely. And like I say, what it required and why it was given as unbuildable by the director of plans and development from Sunning Lake, the only one who really tried to put a house on there. The only reason he said that, and his words were, "It's required for an exception." Now, I'm going to tell you, it's semantics. Words don't mean a thing. And just because of the legal description, and I'm going to give you an example. Hypothetically, Mr. Halbig has a vehicle, and Mr. Wright has a vehicle. I'll give you a description of that vehicle. It's a Ford, Ford or Shenan, a D, each only. They're required by a lot to have a license on it. You're required by a lot to have insurance on it, and you're going to have maintenance and upkeep on that vehicle. But one's a Ford Focus, and one's a Taurus. Unable? No, not by any stretch of the imagination. Just like your lots, your golf course lots that you own, okay, that you own, nothing but a county. And that happens to be lots 13, 14, and 15 on Mendavia, 16, 17, and 18 on Mendavia. And I defy you to take lots 16 and 17, which you own, put them together and put a house on it. You can't do it. So, everything is my school. And I was sold a substandard lot, attached another portion of a lot, okay? And I was sold by the district that that was a buildable lot. And all the time, I never, in 14 years, ever paid for what I thought was a lot and a half. And 10 years ago is when the assessment was made, and like I showed that the legal description, hopefully I clarified, clarified the fact that there was no way I could know otherwise because the legal description you were giving me was Lot 10. All right? So, you know, the other one was Mr. Halbig brought up at the 26th of November meeting. That in 2007, I paid for a lot and a half. That also was the fact that you did it through the county, and you changed it the next year and squared that away like you said you would, and you couldn't change it at that time. But you did change it, and for the next six years, I've been assessed properly as a lot, one lot. And like I say, just listen to you, and I know that if you go that one way, you have to take that description and charge me for a lot and a half on the golf course, $90, or $92, $3, whatever it is that's been charged, I'm not sure. And I have 83 feet. There are people in this room who have hundreds of feet on the golf course and pay one. That's real fair. I don't think so. Mr. McClure, let me ask you a question right now. Anybody in this room can go up to you at the district right now? And I'm reading from, excerpted from your meeting of the 9th of January. "When the owner of a multiple location resident lot has executed the declaration of unity of title agreement and recorded the same in the public records of Highlands County, Florida, for homestead taxation, estate, and other purposes, the district shall calculate the operational maintenance assessments due on the unified lot in the following manner." Let me ask you, is that how it's done? Can I go and get a unity of title for Highlands County? Can I, sir? No. You know that. And you are trying to draft a unity of title for Sunning Lake. Are you not at this time, sir? Are you?
Mr. Roberts, let me say this to you. Number one, you're sitting here attacking me like I can make any difference in this decision. Let's clear this up. Every bit of advice I've given to the board, and I've tried my very best to be neutral, has been neutral legal advice. You can look at every email. You can look at everything you want to look at. Do not sit here and attack me. That resolution was adopted by the board of supervisors, and I stand by it. Now, you asked me about unity of title. I just explained to the board, again, about what the purpose of the resolution was. They understand it. If you have a unity of title and you have multiple lots, you're assessed on the other lots as unimproved. If you do not have a unity of title, you get the improved assessment. It's as simple as that.
I, sir, apologize if you think that I was attacking you personally, but I apologize. I am not. I'm trying to get clarification here. And I am trying to, I went to the county. I cannot. The county is told. I cannot. The title will reappear. And the county told me, the county told me, sir, that Sunning Lake would be contacted, and Mr. McClure would be advised to draft a unity of title for Sunning Lake.
I have no idea what drafting a unity of title for Sunning Lake means, but I can tell you that lot owners, and lot owners only, make the decision as to whether to unify the title to their property based on all the factors we discussed at a prior meeting and somewhat today. So, with respect to your particular property, I was informed by someone from the district who had spoken to the county that you were assigned a single strap number because your lot was on both properties, and you could not sell the half lot when it was encumbered by your house on the whole lot, which I understood. And so, you are not required to have a unity of title. The unity of title only affects the purposes we discussed here today at the district, which is strictly how your property is assessed by the district. It's got nothing to do with anything else. So, having said that, you know, you have a lot and a half. I can't change that. I don't write those rules. I understand everything you're saying here today. It sounds to me like if the issue is a lot versus a lot and a half, the cleanest thing to do would just replat that property quickly and show your property as a single lot instead of a lot and a half. That would cause you not to run afoul of the district regulations regarding multiple lot assessments. That's one thing I could see that is a potential solution here. I understand what you're saying. I've heard everything you're saying, but I don't vote. And the bottom line is, there are unique issues in this particular area that have not been fully investigated. You're asserting them. I understand that. I don't know that the district has a complete investigation into this area as to the validity of your representations. I don't know. But unfortunately, what appears a record is what Ms. Kennedy's pointed out, which is you have a lot and a half. And the lot and a half is the district looks at the property ownership, not all of the underlying, is how close is it to the cart path? Was it a wetland? Is it conservation? How big can your house be? These are things I don't know. And I don't know what Mr. Gresh did when you approached him and what investigation he undertook or anything else. I just simply don't know those things.
Well, the issue's into effect-
Can I ask a question while he's up there, too? I want to ask a couple of questions before.
Oh, wait a minute.
All right.
Dave? Who sold you this lot?
Sunning Lake, your representative. You owned it at the time. You can see from the deed from the time, Sunning Lake owned it. It's right there. It was sidelined.
Rosalie. I've got a copy of it here. Lynn, you're a pretty smart guy. You know, I know you're a pretty astute. You know what's going on, period. I know you've known you for a long time. You're a friend of mine. Hopefully, after this, you'll be a friend of mine, too. But this warranty deed that you signed when you bought this property in 2001 clearly describes that you bought a lot and a half. So, all your arguments about the lot wouldn't fit, the house wouldn't fit, doesn't wash because you always had this lot in the same physical size that you have it now. So, the argument that you took to Mr. Gresh didn't make any sense at all. Absolutely no sense.
It was pertaining only to Lot 10.
Yeah, but you bought it as a lot and a half, which was Lot 10 plus one-half of Lot 11. lot eleven. You can't dispute that.
I, I'm not-
It was always that size.
I'm not disputing it. And, and I was fooled, it was attached that way to make it a buildable lot. And then I get the legal description, which you have before you, from Southern Lake, that says, "Unit fifteen, lot seven forty, lot ten."
Well, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the official warranty deed, and, and you have one, and you've signed it, you know what it says. Also, you, also, let me ask you another question. In two thousand and five, and you brought this up, that you paid three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents in taxes, or in assessments. Do you know what the, uh, do you know what the assessment was that year for one lot?
No, I have no idea.
Okay, I'll tell you what it was. Two thousand and, it was two thousand and five. One lot, the assessment was four hundred and ninety-four dollars. It did not include a golf course. So, if you add the sixty dollars or whatever, that, that bill would have been, as the first bill read, for one lot, not a lot and a half, about six hundred bucks. You paid three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. How in the world could you pay three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and that, somebody will have to dig that out. I don't know how that ever happened. I'm glad you, I'm glad you put that in there because you didn't even pay for one lot that year, because the, the assessment on one lot was four hundred and ninety-four dollars. I don't, you know, so, oh, you, you got good arguments, but the arguments don't make any sense, obviously.
The one that's got the five hundred and sixty-eight dollars on it is printed by Southern Lake. I didn't print it. I mean, my-
That's my question. I don't know how this happened. You got another deal. I don't know how it happened, okay? You've been getting deals for years, and I'm sorry.
What happens on, next year, with this goes into effect based on what Mr. McClure said, is number one, I can't even, I can't even be assessed. I can't even be assessed under this exhibit because my house is across that line. That line of the previous lot ten and a half of water land, my house is on that. So, I can't be assessed as one lot and a half of an unimproved lot. I'm gonna be assessed the whole thing, and I'm gonna be assessed for ninety-seven dollars on the golf course when I got eighty-three feet. I mean, it's just ludicrous.
Lenny, if we would base your assessments on how many feet you have and reduce it in that regard, what do you think about all these condo owners and duplex owners and, and triplex owners? What do you think, I mean, they'd be nipping at our heels so bad it wouldn't be funny, because they've got virtually no square footage on a golf course.
I'm not asking-
And they're getting assessed for it.
...a normal assessment. I, I, even if I only got eighty-three feet, and I don't have a hundred, I'm not asking to get it reduced from sixty, I'm just asking to be assessed as a one lot. Well, that's-
Hey, John? You said if he had his property replotted, that all this would go away, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Who has to do that, and how do I do it?
I would, I would say the board may wish to look into this, because it, it is an action that has to be taken by the county. I don't pretend that it's gonna be easy or cheap. Number one, there's an application fee that, under these circumstances, it, it may well be that the county would waive such a fee. Number two, I'm not saying they will, I'm just saying that is a possibility, we don't wanna overlook. Number, number two, you would, you would have to have a surveyor who actually draws up the mylars and, and shows everything that has to be recorded showing this is a replat. Most of the things in a typical plat would not apply here. So, for instance, if you were just developing the subdivision in its inception and, and putting plats down, lines down, you would, you'd of course have to have traffic studies, you'd have to have a, your paved roads, all of your utilities and drainage, everything addressed. In this case, that's already been done, everything's done. So, really, it doesn't amount to much more than, than showing on a piece of paper that, that by replating these properties, and frankly, your neighbors might well want to join in in this whole area, and, and I don't even know what the district might want to review, how you wanted to help clear this up. That's up to you guys. I, I, I'm not saying one way or the other. But I am saying that if it is a single lot instead of a lot and a half, then we could, we address it easily enough. But, but as a lot and a half, it, it is a problem. That's all I'm saying, for matter precedent, that's-
Are you done?
Yes, I, I'm done, and I'll be out there-
Well, Lenny, I think he's got a resolution. If you, if you wanna go through the, the aggravation or whatever to get this thing replotted and, and get it replatted as, as one, as one, one lot, then, then, then we would, we would be more than willing to adjust this thing.
I'm not sure I will win, but I just, I mean, it's not the money that's involved as far as I'm concerned. To me, it's a profit. That's all.
All right. Bring it back to the board. Any more discussion, comment?
Any other public comment first, sir?
Okay, public comment? On this issue?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna have to wait, I guess.
Boy, Bill North West President. Uh, the issue that Lenny brought up, that's the assessment of a lot of sixty-one dollars per lot, that it needs charged by ninety-one dollars, that the issue is?
That's part of it, part of it.
All right, now, part of the issue, I'm not gonna carry, I'm not gonna carry the water for Charles Brown, but I tell you what, his big argument for the, I don't know how many years, with Mr. McClure, is that that assessment on the golf course was a fee, a tax, or an assessment. And it's never been really clear. It was done under, when Mr. Puckerberger was here and probably Mr. Urshberger. But anyhow, the problem we have with that is that it originally started at fifty dollars, and then there was a fourteen percent increase by everything, and it went up to sixty-one, seventy-two dollars, whatever it was. And Mr. Brown had argued for years, as I say, I'm not carrying this water, but he argued with Mr. McClure, it was just legal to increase that particular fee, tax, or assessment as a percentage. In other words, it was a flat fee, fifty bucks. Okay, fine. But what irritates everybody at that particular time is that it kept on increasing, and under Mr. Urshberger's regime, it looked like it was even gonna escalate more. So, my suggestion, make a few people happy, maybe to revert back to a fifty-dollar fee, tax, or assessment, whatever you call it. And then, maybe Lenny would be happy then too.
Bill? Mr. McClure went through that in February of two thousand and ten. I happen to have a copy, and I'll give it to you if you promise to give it back to me. It's, it's the maintenance assessments for golf course properties. John put this paper together and presented it to the board and I think anybody else that was interested at the time. You might not remember, John, but it's all your, all your stuff. It explains that. I'll give you this copy, if you wanna take it, and make sure you give it back to me.
Does that explain why the, it steadily increased from fifty dollars to sixty-one?
I think it probably does. I think it probably does.
Didn't go up to seventy.
It went up in proportion to the maintenance, to what the maintenance assessments went up in, in those years when, when those assessments were increasing.
Well, it was the Brown argument at the time, if I recall, that he asked Mr. McClure, and Mr. McClure said, "You can't increase that particular tax fee assessment as a percentage."
Okay, anyway, you can have that, if you make sure you give it back to me sometime, okay?
All right. Bring it back to the board. So, we need to, to vote on this?
Yes.
And-
Let's make sure we know what we're voting on.
So, a, a yes vote would mean to approve Mr. White's comment?
The motion before the board, as I recall, is, is restated by me, but it sounds like this, that the property owned by, by Mr. Roberts be assessed for this year at the single lot rate, that, in other words, the board's prior ruling be upheld, but for next year and future years, it be assessed as a lot and a half if, if that is the configuration of lot. So, I believe that, that was the motion. You concur, Mr. White?
I, yes.
Supervisor Halbig? Okay.
Everybody understands here that, so a yes vote would, would to support this resolution, and a no vote would be to basically not, right? Okay.
A, a yes vote, the future assessments are done in an appropriate manner, and a no vote is, they're not.
All right. Call, call or roll?
Supervisor Halbig?
You.
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Halbert?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
President McCullough?
Next on the agenda is Resolution twenty fifteen dash oh-two slash thirteen dash oh-three, and need a motion to approve. I make that motion? Second?
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead.
... Um, for the last week, we've had ten out in the community center, um, sped, and one was not going home.
Could you tell me why?
Um, they didn't show a permit for pre-meeting, and, um, as well as they didn't look appropriate, they didn't let the, the-
They basically bid a lump sum and not a prevent sum.
I think that wasn't on. So, it is, at this time, we, the staff recommends we go with Toys Cleaning Services for the janitorial services for the community center.
Is that the same group that had a sole source before?
Yes.
Is, are these rates the same as current, or are they changed?
They, they are the same, as they've been charging.
If you break that, that overall price down from the other responders, it looks like that would be a lot higher on a yearly basis than what we're currently paying. Is that, have you, did you look at that in that regard or not?
The, the other bid that we received would have been almost twice as much.
Yeah.
Any other comment? Public comment? Bring it back to the board. Any more comments? Call or roll?
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Halbert?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor Halbig?
Yes.
President McCullough?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, Resolution twenty fifteen dash oh-two slash thirteen dash oh-four, need a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Greg, looks like you're up.
Good morning, gentlemen. Sorry, Greg Griffin, Director of Public Works. First item we have, or that I have this morning, is a piggyback of a ground penetrating radar. The piggyback would be from the city of Avon Park. They bought this unit within the last year. The purpose of this unit is to enhance our ability to locate both underwater utility, our underground utility lines, and our utility valves. We'll use this in conjunction with the item we hope to purchase under the next resolution, the back trailer, in, in order to locate all the valves that have been lost over the years. And valves get lost, valve covers get run over, they get covered in asphalt, you'd be amazed how many valves, we don't know where they're at. We have a generalized idea, but short of taking a backhoe and digging up an acre, it's hard to find where they're at. All the information is attached, and there's a picture, last two pages in your document that show essentially what the unit looks like and what it does.
I got a couple of questions. There's a training involved in this?
Correct.
Is that necessary, the fact that the people have already used it at Avon Park, or does there be a cost associated with that?
What we, what are the guys, the training's included. The guys that have used it, or our guys, when they've used it with Avon Park, have used it in conjunction with them, so they, so they've had directed guidance. I would, I would not be comfortable using the, using the machine without the training.
Which would involve expense of going to New Hampshire, I think it is?
No, 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 the training's here on site. They come to us.
Okay, fine. Because I didn't think it stated it that way, but... The only other issue I had, not issue, but just a reminder that the product is being delivered FOB shipping point, and you should always try and negotiate FOB destination on these things.
Sure, well, it says FOB shipping point, the, there's a local vendor, which is the reason the city of Avon Park went with this particular item, and he'll deliver it here.
Okay. Good enough.
Greg, one of the things it mentions in here is extended warranty.
Yes, sir.
Uh, what's the cost of the extended warranty? They gave you a figure on that? It's not listed that I see.
I did not get a figure on that, no, sir. I can look into it for you.
Are you recommending we have one or not?
The extended warranty? I haven't thought about it one way or another, to be honest with you. I'm not a, personally, I'm not a big fan of extended warranties. I mean, I don't, if, if the item works within the first ninety days and it's cared for, most things that are going to happen to it, the warranty wouldn't cover anyways.
Okay. If you're comfortable with it, go ahead.
I got the same que, I'll have the same question on the next one. How often do you use some of this thing?
Well, initially, the guys will use it several times a week, because what we, what I hope to do is initiate a valve maintenance program. We've got hundreds of valves that are located throughout the district, that, A, many of them we don't know where they're at, and B, we don't know the functionality. If you recall, every time we have a water main break in certain areas, we have to shut down eighty to ninety percent of the district's water supply just to service, or just to do whatever repair it is. This would enable us to go locate the, the valves that are close to the areas where the breaks are in the event of an emergency, and close those. What we also hope to do is, just as we do with our fire hydrants, and, and a lot of people don't see this and don't realize it, but we have people out, I've got a crew that goes through, and every week, they attack a certain number of fire hydrants. They go through, they exercise the hydrant, they log it, and they paint it. The other thing that it does is we do hundreds of locates a year where if anyone's gonna dig in their yard, they're required to call Sunshine Locates or eight-one-one. There's my public service announcement for the day. If you're gonna dig, call eight-one-one so you don't hit your phone line or one of our utility lines. But, it will enable us to much more quickly locate those particular utility lines, because right now, our methodology for locating a utility line is going out with a probe, and if we can't find it with a probe, we take a shovel and start digging.
How does it differentiate between a pipe and a valve?
Basically, the, the size of your return grows.
Okay. I'll have it.
Guess that's it. Public comment? Bring it back to the board. Call or roll?
Supervisor Halbert?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor Halbig?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
President McCullough?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, Resolution twenty fifteen dash oh-two slash thirteen dash oh-five. Uh, you again.
I'm back. Item number two, uh, for me today.
We, we need, uh-
Oh, I, sorry, sorry. Need a motion to approve.
So moved. Second?
All right.
All right, item number two today is a valve maintenance trailer by E.H. Wox. This is the same trailer for the city of Avon Park and city of Sebring utilized for the, for the same things that we want to do. Used in conjunction with the ground penetrating radar, it enables us to not only locate the valves, but this has a data logger and an automated arm. I don't know if you've, if you've ever seen our guys out, they have a big thing that looks like a T-bar, and they'll have three guys out there trying to turn, turn some of these stuck valves and can't do anything with it. This actually has an arm that attaches to the top of the valve, and in exercising it, it counts the number of rotations to close the valve, counts the number of rotations to open the valve, to make sure that valve's fully functional. If we come across a valve that's not functional, it'll get dropped into a valve replacement program. As a second benefit for this trailer, anytime we do a dig, even in the event of an emergency, we have to call a locating. This has a jetter head, which allows us to liquefy soil, and a vac trailer. When we liquefy the soil, we can then vacuum it out so that we don't have to do a locate. It's a simple way to do an excavation- It's a simple way to do an excavation without using a cutting instrument. So, it enables us to much more safely and expeditiously address problems.
So, this thing will physically turn a valve off and on?
It will.
From, but you have to be directly on?
It's got an arm that reaches out about 20 feet.
Is that right? It can go in 20 feet and then?
So, yeah, the arm swings out and if you, there's an illustration, it's hard to see in that picture, but there's an illustration in the packet. That arm comes out away from the trailer and you drop, you center it over the actual valve and then it exercises it.
Here again, how many times, how often is it used?
I expect this to be used several times a week where they will go out, barring a break that they're working on, this will become part of our maintenance program where they go out, A, we identify where the valves are, as soon as we identify them, we exercise them, log them, and then it also has a sub-meter GPS solution. And that, what that means, currently, we have a GIS map that shows that we have a valve somewhere in the parking lot out there. This will say the valve is under the bicycle rack in the parking lot, so when we go to look for it, we don't spend four hours looking for the valve. It gives us pretty instantaneous locations.
Public comment? Back to the board. Call or roll?
Supervisor Miller.
Yes.
Supervisor Halbig.
Yes.
Supervisor White.
Yes.
Supervisor Halbert.
Yes.
President McCullough.
Yes.
Next on the agenda, an update on the PGA Tour Latino America Qualifying Tournament. I guess it was brought to the question by the board if this tournament was good for the community as well as being profitable and Mr. Ford is going to address that.
Yes, David Ford, Sun and Lake Golf Club. I just want to point out a couple of things, the memorandum that I sent the board regarding the financial validity of having the tour here at Sun and Lake. It was, this was kind of difficult for me to put together, so I apologize if it was hard for you guys to read. The reason being is because it was, it's apples to apples or oranges, because the first year we had this event, it was in February. So, if you look at the chart, our February numbers, and all of you know that February is one of our, if not our busiest month besides March of the year. What we did was we charged $15,000 for the tour. The total revenue for that event for that particular week was $31,000. That included all their food and beverage and all the things, you know, the range and all those things that we do for them. The total green fees that we brought in was $3,000 less than the prior year in 2012, in February, again, that's February. At the end of the, if, once you add in the food and beverage, our food and beverage week was much better in February, in 2013 versus 2012, and we did end up making more money for the week that they were here in February, about $4,000 more.
Can we ask questions as he's going through this? You show the food and beverage total for those three different events and that's a big number. This is, this is, this is the, this is not an effect of the Latin American Tour, is it? This is not, this is not, this is not over and above what you would normally, I mean, you're showing it as an effect of the tour.
What I'm showing is that's a total for the week, including the tour and including normal business.
Yeah. So, this is?
It's inclusive. So, in 2012, the week that the tour would have been here, which we didn't have, we did $25,000 in food and beverage service that week, including events, including à la carte. Then the next year, in 2013, we had the event and we did $32,000 in food and beverage revenue and that's a result, you know, that extra $7,000 that we made is a result of having the tour here and what they ate that week as far as banquet, serving the guys lunch, breakfast, having water on the course for them, you know, the food and beverage component.
Okay.
As we move forward, after that February event, we realized as a golf operation that February is probably not the best time to hold the event. We're way too busy with other things that are going on and that definitely affected our ability to have people on the golf course as far as green fees were concerned. So, we asked the tour to move back a month into January. January is a much more unknown month because of weather and a lot of other factors. The PGA Tour will play regardless of the weather. It rains, snows, sleet or shine, they're going to be out there playing golf, whereas a normal public player may not be there. So, in 2013 of Janu, January of 2013, you can see the numbers that we had, we did about $40,000 in total revenue that week in January of 13. That's the year prior to holding the event. Then in January of 14, when we had the PGA Tour event, we charged them $15,000 for a course fee. The total revenue for the event was $28,000 and our total green fees for the week were 25, which was $4,000 more than we made the prior year. Our food and beverage revenue was $28,000 that week, which was $9,000 more in revenue. And then it was for a total of $13,000 more that particular week because the PGA Tour came to Sun and Lake. And then in 2015, this year, we continued to grow. We upped their fee, their course fee went up to $16,500. That was a $1,500 increase. Their food and beverage pretty much stayed the same. It didn't change a whole lot, so $29,500 was the total bill for the tournament. We were busier this year, that particular week. I will remind you, the weather was perfect that weekend. In prior years, it wasn't perfect, so we had, really had some good weather. We also had some more outside play, so our overall revenue increased by $4,000, you know, apples to apples year over year, the same week. Some of the other added benefits to the PGA Tour are going to be some of the marketing, the fact that we can use the PGA Tour logo on the billboard out on 27. That's something that no other course in Highlands County can do and as people drive up and down 27 and they see that PGA Tour logo associated with Sun and Lake, it obviously tells people that it's a very good golf course and they should come play it. And then, you know, some, we have members volunteers. As you guys have read through this, you can see that over 70 people volunteer to help for the event. We host a Pro-Am that benefits charity. The Sunday prior to the event, we raised over, or the MGA hosted that event this year and raised over $1,750 for the local charity, Champion for Children. There's some added revenue in there that didn't happen that week strictly due to the fact that the tour's here. We had additional practice rounds from guys that come, from pros that come earlier, play a couple of practice rounds, which we charge them the resident rate when they come. And then, we also added two tournaments, one in the summer of last year and then one in the first week of January this year, just due to the fact that we have the tour here because those guys want to come and practice and they're also playing for money. So, the reason I'm here is to let you know that the tour does want to come back to Sun and Lake. They would like a two-year agreement. They have agreed to increase the course fee to $19,000 next year and then $20,000 the following year for the course fee. And then, obviously, they would continue to do the food and beverage portion of what they do every year, which, you know, we would have to increase the cost every year based on our cost. So, incrementally, however much our cost is going up, we're going to increase that cost on them.
Well, everything I hear is total positives, both from the community and players and so forth. We have no negatives on this, do we?
The only negative I would say is that the members do have to give up one of their courses for the week. I will say that there were no tee times that we, you know, were missed. Your individual tee time that you wanted may not have been available, but you could have played at eight o'clock. So, you know, there was tee times available for people to play, it just depended if they wanted to play at eight o'clock or not. So, I think that's the, the biggest negative is the fact that they have to give up one course, Deer Run, for that whole week and the only thing they get to play is Turtle. That would be the negative that I see. However, I hear a lot of the members that have, some of these players stay with them and the relationships they build, you know, through that, plus playing in the Pro-Am and the fact that they get to volunteer and watch these guys play. There's four players that are already from that tour on the PGA Tour. It won't be long before somebody that stayed in one of our members' houses is, you know, wins a PGA Tour event. And, you know, there's even a bigger connection. So, you know, personally, I think it's a very, very good thing for the club. It's very positive from a financial standpoint and as your manager, I would recommend that we continue to do it because we are going to, it's just going to continue to grow. You know, and the more marketing we're able to do, the more we're able to associate ourselves with the PGA Tour, you know, those things help, especially in our market.
You don't show any additional expenses. I know you had some, you had Porter Johns out there, you got, you got extra maintenance, you're going to have to put the, put the driving range back together, you had spotlights out there, and I mean, any idea what that might have cost us?
All those are billed back to the tour.
All billed back to the tour?
Yes, sir. They pay for the lights, they pay for the porta potties. The porta potties, I believe, are $500. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dave.
That's all, that's all?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They pay for those extra expenses, the apples, the bananas, the, all that stuff they pay for.
And you think as far as goodwill and membership's concerned, you, there was no loss of goodwill, any goodwill?
The only thing I would say, again, it goes back to, you know, giving up a course for that period of time. You know, as, for the most part, the comments that I received were very positive regarding the tour.
Any other comments?
Unrelated comment on the two letters, the one that Kay wrote, I haven't seen penmanship that good in 20 years, so.
And you never will again.
That's right.
You want to compliment her on that?
Yes.
Dave, is there a possibility of raising that $19,000 next year to 20 or 21 this coming year, not in the future? The reason I bring this up is, conservative time ago, I visited with Mr. Tom Hunt. Tom Hunt runs a dot-com trailer over on the driving range. Tom was very instrumental in getting this tour here several years ago and when he brought it to Sun and Lake, his words are that the tour was willing to pay $20,000 because that's what they were paying over on the West Coast. The West Coast did not want it either, as I understood it, and he told Sun and Lake to charge them $20,000. Sun and Lake decided to charge them 15 and make sure we got it. But, I would be in favor of presenting them and I know they're going to scream, they're going to holler, but I'm not sure where else they can possibly go at 20 or $21,000 and make what we can on this thing.
Yes, we can ask for more money. I have no issue with that. Obviously, that's what we're, you know, we're in business to get more people to give us revenue to play our golf courses. So, that's not an issue. The only thing I would say is, is that when I ask for it and we go back and forth on the, you know, you know, how the negotiation goes, you know, hopefully, we can do that and we will negotiate the best we can to make sure we get the price that's correct for the club. You know, the reason I know that they're willing to offer 19 and 20 is because they came in and told me that. It wasn't that we asked for it, they just said, here's what we'll do for you.
And if they've offered it, we know that they'll give that.
That's correct.
I see nothing wrong with asking them 21.
I can definitely do that.
Larry, is it really worth it? We're talking about $1,000. What's their golf, what's their golf budget for the year?
It doesn't amount to that much. It doesn't amount, but it does, though, a couple thousand dollars still is a lot of divots out there.
Well, the point, the point I guess I'm making is that we have overwhelming community support for this thing. We all seem to benefit from it. Our bottom line is black, not red, and I wouldn't want to get into a contest for just a thousand bucks, frankly. That's just my feeling.
All righty. Any other public comment?
Oh.
Virgil Ayat, live over on Calatrava Avenue. When we talk about public relations and what benefit we're getting out of it, and we do a lot, I see, in Highlands County, but you don't see anything outside of there and my way of thinking is we're trying to get people to come down here, visit this place and become a resident and maybe stay full-time. And I don't know the relationship between the PGA and the Golf Channel or whatever, but is there any way we could get a little national look? Golf Channel, I mean, they're 60 miles away. Is it possible for them to maybe come down and give us a little blurb each day of the tournament on their show on Morning Drive or whatever, to give us some visibility out there more than just Highlands County?
According to Mr. Hunt, which Mr. White has referred to earlier, I had a conversation with him about that and he said, when it starts snowing in Sebring, you might see the Golf Channel.
Just a thought. To get us outside the home.
He said, he said their attitude is they're bigger than everybody else and they'll do whatever in heck they want and it's just, it wouldn't work.
Just to kind of follow up on what Virgil said, this year was one of the first years that we were able to get Highlands today to come out and actually do coverage every single day.
Right.
That took, you know, myself, Andy, and I don't know how many other people, calling Mr. Pinson, you know, a lot. We called him during the ladies event at Harder Hall, we interrupted his lunch, we interrupted his breakfast, but anyway, he came out and did those things for us. So, one of the things that I was going to do this year was to try and get some TV coverage. Go over to our local TV channels that service Sebring and see if we couldn't get some of the sports guys to come over and at least do one day of coverage, which I want to say our local channels are out of Tampa. So, we would at least get some of that coverage over there. I don't know how successful I'll be, but we're going to try.
Well, the marketing aspect of this whole thing is a work in progress and every year we get a little bit better, a little bit better, and I think, you know, your comment about going to the TV channels is, would be logical next step to get some more exposure.
Michelle Murray, 5519 in Kansas. I'm just here to thank Sun and Lake for, number one, for having the Latin American Tour here and the Pro-Am because I think it brings a livelihood that we or nobody around here has gotten. And I can say that with my heart because I work not only the volunteer coordinator, I also arrange the housing for all the, all the boys that need housing and every year that's growing. And I have people on the waiting list wanting to house people because they found out how incredible it was for other people that did it. And to find out how these boys are doing, whether they're good or bad, it's still some young man trying to follow his dream and you get to be a part of that. We're all up in ages that now these could be grandchildren and we all value having that livelihood here. Along with that, there is the volunteer of the community. I know he said it was 50 to 75 people here, but with that being said, there are 50 volunteers every day on the course, whether it be those 20 people that are out there filling divots from 4:30 till dark with a man that has made his cart rigged up so he has spotlights on there so he can do it so that we can make Sun and Lake the best course without having any backlash from the community because, you know, these guys take big divots, although they take these divots where we have never been before. So, you know, it's just, and the community, they're, of these 20-some guys that got housing, that leaves 100 other ones that had to find housing, which means that every one of these hotels get it, which means that the Blue Lagoon is packed that whole week with young guys. He also talked about giving back to the community with the Champions for Children. We are very proud to be connected with them and Kevin Roberts is, is just elated with this tournament. I've seen people, because I am there every day from 6:30 till 6:00 at night, helping out. out, because this is like Christmas to me. It, I, I just get up every morning thinking, "Oh, my God, I get to do this again." So, I talk to people that come up to me and say, "We're from Minnesota, and I hear there's a guy here. Can you find out who it is? We'd like to follow him." These are not even Sun 'n Lake people. These are people that come in off the streets, traveling down the road. So, we are getting out there. And I think that any of the naysayers are out there have not actually walked in our shoes. They've not gotten out there and seen every single one of those boys, when they pass a score that is just taking three numbers from them, to stop and say, "Thank you. You're doing a wonderful job. You have a great community. Thanks for volunteering." Every single one of these people go back with a heart that is bigger than what they started with on that day. And with that being said, the $1,000 that you're asking for, and I'm gonna say this, and I probably shouldn't, but I think that's just a little bit of greed. They've offered us more than what we had. I think we should be proud. The, the PGA staff is phenomenal to work with. They do everything that they can for us. They ask us if we need anything. They're always there for them. I didn't know all the things that Dave just said, and now I'm even more proud of the fact that we can help them and we can work with them. So, with that being said, I just hope they come back. Thanks.
Not a dry house.
That's how I feel. I couldn't write that down in a letter, otherwise I would've. By the way, if you'll watch the big break, there is a guy that's still on there. His name is Zachary Portamont, and he stayed with one of our members.
Rather than asking them for an extra $1,000, maybe they would agree to donate an extra $1,000 to this Champions for Children.
But it's, it's not a bet. I did not think of that. That's something I can come back to them with.
Plus, I can write it off.
Absolutely. Yep. Okay.
All right.
The other thing is, the, the tour is also willing to move one week earlier in January versus going the third week, they'll go the second week, which is even better for the golf club, because a lot of our members have not made it all, you know, not made it back from Christmas. So, it'll be less impact on the members as well. So, it's one week earlier, and it's, it's a little bit more money. And I love the idea of asking them to donate to the Champions for Children. We'll, we'll try that.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the add-on items. None? Petitions and communications? None? Staff reports?
Yeah, I have a comment on that.
On the staff reports?
Yes. Both the enforcement and the security reports are becoming historical documents these days. What we got was a December report in middle of February. And I, I just don't think that's acceptable.
We had a, a scheduling problem, but we're well aware.
Well, we always seem to have a reason, Mike. It'd be nice if we could tighten this up and also on, on the website, posting our, our minutes and the time we matter, too. And I've talked to you several times about that.
Yes, sir. And we try, we, our goal is to post the minutes when we put out the agenda for the next meeting, which is a week in advance. And that's our goal.
You haven't met it?
I believe we did.
Not when I, I talked to you the last time, you did not.
That was, uh, the minutes went out, what, last week? Yeah, they were on there.
Well, look, I don't want to split hairs, but the point is that I get calls about why they're not there, and we, we get reports that are six weeks after they're finished. Can we please tighten up on this?
Certainly.
John McClure, you're up.
I have, I have several things. The first thing is our tax exemption application. Mr. McIntyre called me to say that the previous documents I'd given him needed to be reformatted into the formal application process that, that they use. So, I, I have met with him and received the application. Tanya and I are going to complete that today, and it would be submitted in accordance with the board's earlier request that, that it be submitted. Now, my intention was to have Mr. Wright sign the application as general manager. I presume that's okay with the board? Okay, so, we'll, we'll, we'll complete it that way. In conversation with Mr. McIntyre, he did say that his preliminary review was positive. He wants to review the agreement that we have with the Casper organization, but that as long as they don't actually lease the property and as they're operating on our behalf, and I believe that would be factually the case, there's a, a good possibility that the exemption will in fact be granted. He would not concede that without a complete review and, and, you know, compliance issues. But, but he seems to think that at least it was much more positive than we anticipated. So, I think that's a step forward. We will know that, of course, after we get notification, when the formal, formalities are all done and the application procedure closes. That's March 1st. With respect to the Ayala-Severino litigation, as you probably know, Mr. Gonzalez had filed a motion for summary judgment with respect to at least two of the couples that had, that were plaintiffs with, on the, against the district because they had no contact at all with the district, did not rely on representations by their own testimony and their depositions, et cetera. That's scheduled for February 23rd. I would, I would note, however, that we received a request to reschedule that hearing by the plaintiffs, because they were called to, in federal court, they have docket calls, et cetera, and the federal court mandated that their firm, in another case, independent of this one, be heard during that time. And so, they've requested the court reschedule this summary judgment hearing to accommodate their lack of availability. So, what the court's gonna do with that, frankly, I don't know. We'll see. But the motion has been made. Also, a litigation summary was provided to each of you, I believe, and, and that followed, that, in essence, is a insurance attorney analysis of the strengths of the case. In his review, he said that everybody was waiting on the deposition of Mr. Severino before anybody wished to continue further settlement talks. You might recall that the plaintiffs had early requested an early mediation in this matter, and yet, when the insurance company said, "Okay, fine, you've requested it, let's, let's do it," they've been dragging their feet, waiting to get Mr. Severino's deposition. That deposition has been completed. It was not particularly favorable to the plaintiffs, and so, the, our insurance folks are gonna take another run at a potential settlement, and we'll see where that goes.
What, you're right about the deposition certainly did, I thought, change the ballgame. Does that change the position of our insurers regarding any settlement?
Did it change, with regard to settlement?
Yeah.
I, I would think, I would think not at all, really. And here's why. They, they look upon it, insurance guys always look upon this as, "What's our exposure? What's our money out of pocket?" They've never felt, in my opinion, that this was a, a real scary one. But of course, had Mr. Severino testified that, "Oh, yeah, these guys, I went down there and they vouched for me, we'd agreed to do all that," you know, they had some sort of a, a agreement between him and the district then found, then yeah, that would have greatly increased their potential exposure. But that, that was not the case. So, and they didn't expect it to be the case. So, I don't think their position has changed very much. They, they, it's business to them. How much is it gonna cost us to go to trial? How much is it gonna cost us to settle? What's the least amount of money we're gonna have to pay? Let's try to work it out. That's always their, their position.
Just to be clear, we really have no say in that, do we?
No, we don't.
If they want to offer settlement, we have to sit back and watch it go.
That's correct.
What about the legal costs?
Well, again, the, the legal cost being our cost for Mr. Gonzalez' firm, or what legal cost are you referring to?
The ones that we, we are?
I, I would be surprised if we were able to recoup any of that.
Okay.
Okay.
If we were successful, was there any thought of countersuing for that?
Well, again, legal fees in Florida are awarded based either on a statute, for instance, a mechanic's lien, landlord-tenant law, something like that, where the statute clearly says a prevailing party wins, or by contract. And, and neither one of those really apply in this case.
All right.
The next matter is, we are working with the district right now to prepare a letter to the lenders regarding the loss of their lien against these properties that the county has actually taken ownership of by issuance of the clerk's estatement tax deed. You might recall that we had previously briefed the board that upon the county's clerk's issuance of, of the deed, that wipes out all prior liens, assessments, everything against the property. I think we probably have a duty as a district to notify the, the banks, Fifth Third, and Phase Five bondholders, et cetera, that their liens against the designated properties have been lost, and there are other properties pending. We will notify them as such deeds are issued. We will also make annotations on the district records to the effect that the liens have been removed and, but I believe that after issuance of the deed, any subsequently accruing duly levied assessments would, would apply. It's just that anything that was against the property prior to that time is wiped off. And the last thing is, as indicated, we are working on finalizing the appeal procedure to bring to the board. We will have that ready for the next board meeting.
Okay.
And that's all that I have for this month, today's meeting.
All righty.
What about the Doty case?
Have we heard any more about that?
The district is not in any way a party to that case.
No, no, Doty.
We're done.
The civil litigation.
Okay, what happened with that?
Uh, we've had, we've had no updates.
No.
No updates? You refer?
No, I'll forward those when I get them. We've had nothing recently on the Doty.
They were gonna sue the district?
Yes, they were, because they say our security was inadequate, and we should've known about all this and yada yada.
Right. I mean, the kids are already in jail, but I heard, sentenced, but.
Yeah.
I, I'm sure they're waiting, but there's also a requirement to give us notice. I think it's a six-month statute.
We've got all that.
Yeah.
I think what they were waiting on, Mr. Halbert, was to see the outcome of the criminal case.
Yeah.
I'll look for an update in the near future.
Okay. But until a case is actually filed, we don't put it on the litigation report. Has it been filed?
Yeah.
Okay. Excuse me, I'll check on my closure.
Mr. Wright's report?
I'll be brief. Once again, we're having our annual, what do we do with these wild pigs that are tearing up our yards? Let you know, we are coordinating with the county. They're having the same problem in the property they own west of Valboa. We're actually using dog hunters at night to chase and trap the animals. We've had problems in our western areas. We've had problems near the Unit 2 sewer plant, which is down by Tanglewood. And it's just something that we have to battle from time to time. So, we are doing that, and Mike Hurley is coordinating it all, so that the security guys know. And if you hear any, if you hear anything, please let us know. If you have any complaints about animals in anybody's neighborhood, please let us know, because we don't always hear about it. We're meeting with county folks next week in a continuation of trying to finalize the EMS site at the hospital. Our goal is to have that completed by the end of March. And last but not least, Mr. Griffin is working with Mr. Bell, and we're gonna start planting trees over on Deer Run as part of our reforests, reforestation project that you approved in the budget last year.
Mike, are you planning to have both the signage presentation and the maintenance yard presentation the next meeting?
Yes.
That'll make for a long meeting, man.
That's all I have as present.
Thank you. Unfinished business? New business? I've got one thing. Obviously, Mr. Wright has indicated he plans to retire the end of his contract, September We need to start the search process for his replacement. Obviously, there's two places to look. You can look internally, and you can look outside the community. I feel before we go outside the community, we need to look inside the community. And obviously, there are three candidates, in my opinion, that would be viable candidates for this position. I've had individual meetings with all three. Mr. Wright, I had a meeting with him, and he's definitely gonna retire and live out his contract, so he is not a candidate at this time. I've had a meeting with Mr. Griffin, which I think has the qualifications to run the district, and he was appreciative of the offer, but he has declined. Feel it's not the right time for him, but we certainly would respect any future considerations for other positions. Ms. Kennedy, as we all know, has expressed an interest in assuming that job. Over the years, we've all worked with her. We all know her work ethics. We know her professionalism. We know her ability to do the job. I am in support of entering into contract negotiations with Ms. Kennedy. And what I need from the other board members is a direction in terms of where we go with her, in terms of interviewing her individually or entering into contract negotiations with her. So, with that said, Mr. Halbert, I, I need to know what, what you would like to do. Would you like to interview her, or would you like to proceed to contract negotiations?
You put me on the spot here.
Well, it's, it's just a matter, do you feel you want to talk to her directly, or are you comfortable with?
I think I'd like to sit down and talk with her first.
Okay, that's fine.
Before we enter into any.
That's fine.
Contract.
No problem. Mr. Miller?
I think you know my support. As far as I'm concerned, you can enter into contract negotiations.
All right, Mr. White?
As far as I'm concerned, we can enter into the contract negotiations.
And Mr. Halbert?
I, I agree, we could enter into contract negotiations.
Okay, I will proceed with that direction. I'll have Mr. McClure sit in with me, and we'll, the three of us will sit down and see if we can't work out a deal. Committee reports. Public comment? Oh, it's my time.
Quick on my feet. Hi, my name is Julie Tiger, 2838 Manor Drive. I come here representing the voice of the racket club. There are a couple of questions that have been asked, not answered, because there were no answers, and I am proposing them now to you. First of all, we're, number one thing is, what phase are we in when it comes to bathrooms and kiosks at the, at the courts? That's question number one.
Okay. The original RFP, I believe, is to basically repair, not repair, replace the entire court, all the courts. And I have asked Greg, in addition to that, to give us an estimate in terms of what it would cost us to add that facility as well. That is not part of the, the proposal, but it would be an additional point of information.
Just to further answer your question, last year, I proposed that we do that, but we also include in that building not just the bathrooms, but also a small equipment facility, and also space for marketing Sun 'n Lake, which I envision would be in the front of the tennis courts. We have room for that kind of a building. So, I think we're gonna look at that very seriously this next budget cycle, which is coming up shortly.
That is an excellent idea, because people are constantly looking for equipment, looking for advice, and there's no place to go. All right? And if you've ever had to go to the bathroom in the middle of a game, running over to the clubhouse is not the funnest thing in the world. We're finding that Sun 'n Lake is no longer just a golf course, it is also a golf club. It is also a racket club. I believe we have approximately, give or take, 300 members at this point, and they bring revenue as well, not quite as much as your golfers. However, there, our courts are premier. They are the best around. People are coming not only from Sun 'n Lake, but they're coming from every other area in Highlands County and beyond Highlands County. When we run a tournament here, and we had two of them last week, people come not only to play, but they come to watch. to play, but they come to watch. We have state championship players that play on these courts. There are many a tournament that we can pull into this place if we can get it up to snuff. All right? Now, the other questions are fees. When you do this construction, will they be frozen during, for that amount of time? If it takes three months to fix, three months added on to a membership if you have a yearly membership. Most of us renewed our memberships, however, that was a question, everyone now, don't kill the messenger here, okay? I'm bringing questions they wrote down. That was a question, and I believe it's a legitimate one. Many of us are here all year. We will have no place to play.
Understood.
All right? We go else, we go outside, we go to Tanglewood, if they allow us in.
We really haven't discussed that particular issue, but in retrospect, when we closed down the driving range for a year, or I should say, the summer to rebuild that, we did extend those memberships, so I, I'm not saying we will, I'm just saying it's a possibility.
I know, I know. But I want to, the concerns, these are the concerns. And another concern about fees is a seasonal membership. Some people are only here for three months, four months. If they're from outside of the district, they pay $100 for a membership where they can come in, and to them, it's not enough. A 10-pass play is not enough, because you can do that in two weeks. So, is there a way of adding another type of membership for those seasonal players? You've got three months, six months, whatever, at the end of the date, it just shuts down. I know mine shut down on the day I got it last year, so I'm sure it can be programmed. Something to think about.
We'll think about it.
The other fee question. When I have a guest staying with me for two days, I would like to be able to bring them to the courts without having to go to get them a pass. Most other places that I play at have a guest membership, where it's like a 10 punch pass. You buy it, and when your guests come, you can have them sign a waiver, if that's what you need them to do. But you can use that 10 not just for one person, but for maybe five, two days each. Most places I go, I know where my sister lives, New Jersey girl, they have passes they can actually buy, they cost $5 each, you put 'em on. She bought four. So, when I go, I put on my little pass, I go to her courts, and I play. Another thought. You might be able to go that way. All right. We, safety issues, and not the courts, all right? We play on them, they're beautiful, people come far and wide, but our tennis players, I also play tennis, we're losing tennis memberships by the droves. They're not sure why they can't play on the courts that are, that need to be fixed, that have been deemed need to be fixed, because they played on them before they were ever fixed. And they, they're going elsewhere to play for nothing. That revenue is going to be lost, because memberships are not going to be renewed. So, that I got from a tennis player who now no longer plays here, although he renewed his membership, but all of his tennis player friends, like 20 of them, go elsewhere.
Our concern was, is that if you got hurt out there, it'd be a million-dollar lawsuit, and we're willing to give up the $100, I guess.
Then the question was, I said the same thing. What is the waiver for?
John McClure, you wanna answer that one?
What's the waiver for? So, what you're saying is, if the court isn't open, why are we signing waiver? There's nothing to play on, is that what I'm hearing?
They're saying...
No, there are two courts playable.
I thought there were still some courts open.
There are two.
Okay. Well, my, my answer is exactly what was represented previously. You wanna keep playing tennis on courts that we, that we think are not safe, because there's unlevel playing surface, then, then you must sign a waiver in order to do that, so that the district doesn't sue if you're injured based on the unlevel playing surface.
I agree.
That's all.
They sign the waiver, but there are still only two courts that they can play on, they've got 20 players, so they're sitting around, and why aren't there nets on there if they've signed the waiver, and they choose to play on them?
The reason, the primary reason being is, we modified the two courts that are closed, we did some, we did some, basically core samples out of, we've removed sections of the courts, they are not built back to what the initial standard was of the courts. The other courts have not been modified. We know that we have some structural problems with them, but they have not failed to the degree of the first two. Because we've made that modification, we feel we've got a higher level of exposure.
Okay, 'cause they're not back to the way they were, which is not good, but playable.
That's correct. And the reality is, one of the two courts theoretically could be played on, someone that was not our staff took it upon themselves to, to patch the holes with some, either patch binder or some concrete, which is not, you've got transitions from a regular playing surface to what would not be considered a customary playing surface, and there's some modifications there that are outside of our control. And I think when the board, when the board was given the option, they chose to continue to protect ourselves, because the other courts, none of those have been modified at all, they're in their current, or in their original state.
That's an answer I can give them, but I couldn't, I couldn't give them an answer. It's made no sense to me either, why you couldn't play on them if we already have played on them.
Yeah.
So, now I have the answer for them.
John, I've got a question. If you sign a waiver, you can still sue, can't you, if you get hurt?
You can't waive negligence, they say.
Yeah.
So, what, okay, I'm not a lawyer.
Okay, what does that mean?
Yeah.
Well, in my opinion, what Supervisor Halbig's saying is, okay, you signed a waiver, you get hurt, you can still sue. I personally think those waivers would be likely upheld by the court, and here's why. You know, if we say that we're gonna waive everything based on this tour of the district, and we bring people in, but we don't tell them about a big hole in the ground, they step in and hurt themselves, break their leg, or whatever, then we're probably gonna get sued successfully on that, for failure to warn. But once we say, a warning here, plus this is a recreational activity that you're voluntarily participating in, you can see the problems, you can see the surfaces, I think those waivers would clearly be upheld, in this circumstance.
Okay. Is that similar to what they call safe harmless? The district will be safe harmless from any of that, because you've given the information?
Well, that's exactly right. A waiver and a hold harmless are two different things. Hold harmless means if the, if the district is sued along with somebody else, then basically we're agreed, you're gonna pay our legal fees, as well as other legal fees.
Okay, thank you. I taught PE for many years, I know hold harmless. Trust me. Okay. Now, other safety issue. Lights to get out of the court. When we do this thing again, we need to look at some kind of safety light outside of the courts. We turn on the lights when we play at night. To get out, you better bring a flashlight, 'cause you can't see, and you can't get to your car, 'cause you can't see that either. I usually turn the lights on my car on, on the way out, so we could at least have a direction. But there are no lights outside of the court, so you can see where you're walking. And it becomes a safety hazard. We need a light, some kind of light, even if it's a motion light out there, but it has to happen, because that, we didn't warn anybody about.
Is that part of the RFP, or not?
It's not part of the RFP, but we can put some indirect lighting along the sidewalks that, while we're in there doing ground disturbing activities, it won't, it won't not be that impactful.
You're looking for sidewalk lighting, is that what you're...
I don't care what kind of lighting, as long as people can see to walk. I mean, most of us are not spring chickens, and we're not children, so, you know, you're walking out, and you know, you twist an ankle on that sidewalk, which you can, because it's, it's not even with the grass all the way through.
Okay.
You have an issue. And I'd hate to see anybody get hurt, that's number one, and I'd sure hate to see us ever get sued. But that is something that has been addressed many times, every time we try to get out at night, somebody waits and turns off the lights last, and then they, we hold the gate for them, so they don't run into it.
Is the, is the parking lot lit on that side? I'm sorry, I don't...
Say it again.
I said, is the parking lot lit on that side? We'll look into it. I know the restaurant side is well lit, and we've got the typical high-hat lighting.
No lighting, none on the parking lot side.
Nothing on the parking lot, or...
Where we prefer to go.
We can address that.
It's not a good situation.
It's not. It's not, it really should.
You need a timer.
Say it again?
Some kind of a timer up there that...
Sure, what we could do is tie it to the timers that are on the courts. The courts will not stay open beyond, it's either 12 o'clock, 12 a.m. or 1 a.m., so that they would, they would stay, you know, the parking lot would stay lit.
We, we turn the lights off, which we can very well leave on, but that, all of us, is a waste of energy when we leave at 9:00, and the courts are open till whatever. However, that, those lights don't shine out onto the parking lot.
No, I'm, whatever.
The inside lights on the courts do not give you lights as you're going to your car, 'cause they're on the courts.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Okay, good. Racquetball is one of the most popular sports in the country today. It is growing by leaps and bounds. I have friends of mine in New Jersey, whenever I post pictures on Facebook of what we do here, are going, "I wanna know more about this. When can I come and visit? When can I come and play?" People love our courts. They love them, they love them, they love them, because what they have in their own places are makeshift courts. We have eight premier courts that will attract state tournament play, district tournament play, national tournament play, if we get up to par. That's just an FYI, in my opinion, because we, as I said, we house two state champions. They won the women's state championships just recently. We had two tournaments last week. We had a clinic for newbies, which brought in revenue, because they had to get a pass in order to play. We need to take a look at that aspect of not only revenue getting, but attracting people to come to this area. And I, I can almost guarantee it. You have golfers that play pickleball, you have pickleball players that play golf. I'm even trying to swing that golf club and get the ball further than I want it to go, because we have a wonderful community. We need to do, we need to address all of it. We can't leave that group out, because you won't have them much longer if you do. And then it's redoing it all over again. Everything we do is volunteer. People who taught the clinic were all volunteer. People who ran the tournament, the first tournament was all volunteer. Second tournament was wonderful, you had a lot of your heavy hitters, they did a great job, Jonathan did a great job. It was a wonderful tournament. I invite you all to come and watch. Come early in the morning, come about 3:00 on Tuesday, Thursday, and Sunday, or come at night on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, right? Come and watch the game. I'll stick a paddle in your hand, and you're gonna say, gee, how come I didn't know about this before? Our ages range from younger than me, I'm not going there, to way older than me. It's a great sport, and I encourage everybody to get fit with it. I think I'm done. Do you have any questions for me?
No, but pointing to Neil, some of these membership ideas and options are quite interesting. We need to look into that in terms of the different types of memberships. Like, we've been exploring that on the golf, we can do that also in tennis, and you can come back with some ideas about different times, memberships, and so forth.
Thank you. The last thing I'd like to do is commend everyone that works the recreation, golf, and, I'm gonna, the pickleball and tennis courts for their diligence, because they need to listen to us, probably mainly me, when the complaints, I don't know why, maybe because I have the Jersey girl mouth, but they, I, they bring it to me, I bring it to them, not always my thoughts. So, I certainly appreciate your listening. I thank everybody involved, because, including all the pickleball members that showed today, because I said, I need backup, and here they are, and I am glad to see that. So, I thank you all, and I'm glad to be living here in Sun and Lake. It was a good choice for us, and I, thanks.
Thank you.
Is there still time left?
No, she used it, she used it all up.
TJ Bogart, 3813 Catalina Drive. About three, four years ago, I addressed this board regarding a paved path from Catalina to the tennis courts. I thought, at that time, you could get involved with the assisted living in conjunction with them, and put a path so that they could have a complete walk around, around their facility, which would accommodate the carts going to the golf course. At that time, the previous general manager said that there was grant money available to do that. Where are we on that issue? I was addressed it to Mr. Miller.
I have no idea where we are on that issue, Terry, to be honest with you.
Well, is there still grant money available? Can somebody check it?
We haven't, we haven't applied for grant in several years. Mike, how would you assess the opportunity?
I would say, the earlier comment about when it snows in Seabreeze, there is no grant money for that.
Okay.
And it's not property we own.
Well, I still think it would be a nice community gesture on our part if we got together with the assisted living and asked if we could put a cart path along there that would assist them and walk around around their facilities, which would give us better access to the golf course from our direction. We're probably the only area that doesn't have a cart path going to the golf course. You know, we don't wanna keep cutting through the assisted living parking area, and that cart path that we do have is in dire need of repair.
Okay.
That's it.
So noted.
Hey, Bogey, maybe we could, maybe we could make a deal with, if your Property Owners Association would agree to a...
We're not going there today.
...sidewalk all the way around, we'd get a sidewalk all the way around that lake.
He wants you to share the cost, is what he wants you to do. Any other public comment? Back to the board. Anything from the board? I got one thing. Cliff Wood, on a trip north on an airplane, sat next to a golf course owner in St. Louis, Missouri, and they got talking about marketing, and this guy uses this company called Legendary Marketing, you can look at their website, and this golf course owner just went on and on and on, what a great job this guy does, and he's a national-type company. And so, Cliff contacted me to find out if we would have an interest in talking to this guy, and I said, sure, I'll take a day, and he's located up in La Canto, Florida, up here, so it'd be like a one-day trip thing, and so sometime next month, we're gonna go up and just talk to him and see what his program is, and, and obviously, Billy Casper has their own communication company as well, so, but it would just give us a nice comparison type thing, so, just to make you guys aware of that, and if you wanted to go check his website, certainly feel free to do so.
How you spell that?
Legendary.
Legendary.
Yeah. And when you look on his address, it doesn't say Legendary Marketing, it's like L-G-M-N-C, something like that, I don't know what it is, but... So, in conclusion, Mr. Halbert, I suggest you get with Tanya and have your interview with her, so you're more comfortable with it, or not comfortable with it, and nothing else, meeting is adjourned.